Good morning. It's Wednesday, August 23rd, 2017, 9 o'clock. We're in the Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street Northeast for our regular and weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We started our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, dear God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is always public comment, and we do have someone signed up this morning. Ken Hetzel is here. If you'd go over there, Ken? Please.
For the record, my name is Kenneth Hetzel, and I live at 745 Harris Street in Salem in Marion County, Oregon. I'm a little more nervous today than normal because I have two bad things I've got to do. One is I'm going to the Veterans Stand Down at First Baptist Church in a little bit and try to get some teeth pulled. I've broken four or five of my teeth off. And the second thing is a friend of mine died, Evelyn Henderson, and I'm going to her memorial. And I want to tell you about the situation. The Meals on Wheels called one of the members of the church and said Evelyn hadn't answered the door in three visits. Could we do a friendly check? And they found her dead. She was a brittle diabetic. And among the Advisory Board of Northwest Senior Disability Services, and we have a program called The Gatekeeper that trains people that visit shut-ins to identify events like this, that, you know, that give help for people that start acting weird. And the legislature this year discontinued the funding for that. You know, we're looking into it. Does this Meals on Wheels deliver Monday, Wednesday, Friday? Was she dead for a week? Was she dead, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? You know, should they have called the first day, the second day, the third day? You know, we're trying to improve the service. Northwest believes in that service to identify people isolated and in trouble. You know, I appreciate any support you can give us to keep the training of people out in the public, that, you know, the mailmen, you know, the caseworkers, anybody that sees somebody different to have a friendly visit like that, that, you know, if we had done it the first day, she may have been alive. We just don't know. We're trying to figure everything out. So then for some good news, we're having a free screening Saturday, August 26th, at the Unitarian Universalist Church out on Corden Road in Center. It's called Inside Peace. There's a program that is working in prisons. We had this, we showed it about three months ago and had 50 people come. One lady was a trainer for the state police, and the program's being tested at Coffee Creek, I believe, now. It teaches inmates self-respect, and it makes better people out of them while they're in prison and when they get out. And I would encourage you as leaders, I've been to the Capitol, invited all the staff that I could find to come that are here in Salem. It's important that we come view this movie and talk about prisons, and I know Commissioner Carlson's active in the reintegration. It helps people be better people and get out. And I appreciate the chance to be here and talk today. Thank you.
Ken, I do have one. I'm on the Northwest Seniors Board, and I did hear during a bunch of times about this Gatekeepers cut, but I didn't really know what to make of it. But your story, I'll try to keep it in mind and see what we can do. A lot of these programs, they come and grow, but, and you don't know what, which ones really matter, it sounds like. Sounds like this is a good one.
We got, we got our funding for Project Independence, is that OPI? Oregon Project Independence was the biggest one we're pushing for, and we got funding for it, but they, they cut this. This was a little, little chunk, you know, less than $200,000 probably, and it just got the axe. But I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next items are consent calendar, Commissioner Cameron, they tell me it's you.
Mr. Chair, thank you. First item on the consent calendar, Mr. Chair, I move that under Business Services, we approve a recommendation to adjust pay grade upward for classifications number 277, Employment Integration Specialist, number 310, County Surveyor, number 375, Building and Planning Division Director. Also under Business Services, approve an order adopting the Health Insurance Study Committee Charter. Under the Health Department, approve a contract for services with Public Partnerships LLC for $600,000 to provide fiscal intermediary service, intermediary services to several rental subsidiary programs. Also under the Health Department, approve Amendment Number Two to the Contract for Services with Westward Pharmaceutical Corp. to add $50,000 for the purchase of, can the attorney pronounce that word? BUPRINOFN, HCI, and methadone for participants in the A and D program. I'm sure we've got it on record.
You see the health person every night.
Yeah. I apologize. Under the, I'm just teasing there. Under the Tax Office, approve a property tax refund in the amount of $48,424.69 to SL Snacks Oregon LLC for account number R82455. Also under the Tax Office, approve a property tax refund for the amount of $17,355.22 to SL Snacks Oregon LLC for account number R325506. And finally, under the Treasurer's Office, approve an order distributing Oregon State Forest timber revenue as per ORRS Chapter 530.
Just for the record, I didn't hear you read that one. Maybe you did.
Which one?
The first one under the Tax Office.
Oh, maybe I did. Did not. Sorry. I'm going back up. Approve a, under the Tax Office, approve a property tax refund in the amount of $15,232.80 to Bryan Court LLC. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for keeping me, continuing to move towards perfection, but I'm a long ways away.
Well, second to motion.
Which one? Are you a long ways away, or?
All of it.
Yeah.
You just pick.
It has been moved to second to the consent calendar this morning. Any further discussion? No. Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. We have one action item, and then a hearing at public, at 9:30, so I assume we'll have some time in between, or you can drag it out. This is under Business Services. Consider approval of Amendment Number One to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract to approve the guaranteed maximum price of $9,195,617 to construct the new Sheriff's Office Public Safety Building. Colleen Kunchchafin, good morning.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
For the record, I'm Colleen Kunchchafin, Business Services Director. Today, we're here to, for you to consider for the approval of the guaranteed maximum price to construct the new public safety building. Construction Management General Contractor Contract was signed in March, did a grand opening last week while I was on vacation, which authorized a construction management portion for the contract. And so we'd like to have your support to approve this GMP amendment. It's our gross maximum price of $9,251,817.
Well, that isn't drug out very much, but any questions or comments?
Well, I think we need a little discussion about, for people listening, about what we're doing. I know we've talked about it in prior weeks, but they may not have caught those programs, so.
Okay. So Emmerich Construction Company is chosen as our general, our contract management general contractor for this project, Public Safety Building out at Almsville Campus. We've begun all the process and received all the requests for invitation to bid on the subcontracts for all those. We've received all those. And Matt Winkler is here today as our project manager for that with Emmerich, as well as Eric Eckfield, Larry, and Kevin, who are Marion County employees, Eric Eckfield's from Day CPM, who are working on this project and working with all the subs to come out and get this work done. So it's basically a 30,000 square foot building for our central district office, as well as our parole and probation programs that will occupy, we hope to be occupied by next July. So that's where we're shooting. But the $9 million actually came in a little under. We have a little contingency from what we were expecting, so that's the good news. And we're gonna, probably, we broke ground last week. The site development package is underway as we speak, and we, all the permits are ready? Yep. Close to being ready. And we'll be beginning, I think Matt and team are getting all the staging for all the fencing and whatnot to go up next week.
Great.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I mean, we were out for the groundbreaking, and it's very exciting that we're able to do this, and I know that the Sheriff's Office is very pleased. There was a question that came up, and John, maybe you can answer this, about the funding for this, and it was on Facebook, and I, so I know that we had some money set aside that was borrowed money, or, so what, is all of it borrowed? Is there a portion of it that's capital, that's general fund, or do you recall?
It's mostly borrowed, and of course, the general fund will pay the debt service over, it's a 15-year loan.
Okay.
This is the 1.9%?
It's a very low percentage. That's why we thought it would be a good idea to borrow it. One of the things that, Mr. Chair, if I might certainly, one of the things that I think most people don't understand about building a public safety building, this was true of the Salem's new police building, too. State code requires a different set of codes for those kinds of buildings. They're much more stringent and consequently much more expensive than a general building. So we have been part of, I'm sure, part of the code that we're trying to meet and get the permits. That's part of what the permit folks in the city will be looking at, but it does increase the cost of public safety buildings. And so when you talk about a dollar per square foot, it kind of shocks people, but it's because the buildings have to meet certain seismic standards and a variety of other standards for the protection of our sheriff's officers and command staff. Some of the other things that we'll be doing, because of the way the building's constructed, we have to have special Wi-Fi capability within the building, so we're going to be putting some of that in. And it will be a modern building for, as a police structure, that will help the sheriff protect folks in the county and protect themselves much more efficiently and effectively.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
And perhaps a motion.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of Amendment Number One to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract to approve the guaranteed maximum price of $9,195,617 to construct the new Sheriff's Office Public Safety Building.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved to second, as you just said, but to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the Sheriff's Office Public Safety Building. Anything else? Just one little comment I didn't hear, but maybe was mentioned, this will include some new, well, parole and probation will be included under this roof and?
Yes.
Some expansion. So, anything else? Then I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Thanks, Colleen, and all.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, it's 9:16, and we do have a public hearing at 9:30, so I'm going to, unless somebody has something else they'd like to bring up, call a recess till 9:30. All right, we're back, and it's now 9:30, and we want to, I will, open up a public hearing that considers appeal of a hearings officer's decision that denies conditional use, CU 17012 Greenwood, Clerk's File 5729. Joe Fenimore, you are here and in place. Would you tell us about it and lead us on here?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore, this item before you today is a conditional use to change the occupant of a temporary hardship dwelling on a 55-acre parcel in an EFU zone located on Saniam Loop Southeast, Almsville. In 2006, the applicant's were approved to place a temporary mobile home on the property to house a caregiver for Mr. Greenwood. In 2010, they were granted approval to convert that hardship mobile home into a secondary farm dwelling to house an employee of the farm and convert an accessory structure into an apartment to house the caregiver for Mr. Greenwood. That hardship was renewed on a yearly basis until September 2016. December 2016, the applicant filed a condition use case 1633 to change the medical hardship from Mr. Greenwood to Ms. Greenwood. That decision was denied by the planning director and due to some unusual circumstances was not appealed. On April 5th, 2017, the planning director allowed the applicant to refile the request and sent the matter directly to the hearings officer. Hearings officer conducted a public hearing on June 27th, and issued, or, excuse me, the hearings officer conducted a public hearing and on June 27th issued a decision denying the request. That decision was appealed to the board on July 12th. In the denial, the hearings officer found the applicant did not satisfy several of the criteria, failed to provide the requisite medical hardship certificate, did not demonstrate that the care needed by Ms. Greenwood would, could not be provided by a family member, did not identify the specific extent and nature of the care needed, and that the proposed caregiver had the ability to provide that care. In addition, the hearings officer found the mobile home on the property, approved as a secondary farm dwelling, is not being occupied by an employee of the farm as required and therefore is in violation of the Marion County Code. Under provisions in the Marion County Code, a land use permit cannot be issued if the property's in violation unless issuance of the permit would correct the violation. In the appeal, the applicant disagrees with the conclusions of the hearings officer, and I'll let her present her information to you. Regarding the physician certificate, staff discovered that there are actually two certifications in the record, one dated August 10th, 2016, on the form provided by the planning office, and the second on a document that was supplied from the doctor dated March 31st, 2017. Based on this information, staff believe the criterion regarding a doctor to certify the hardship exists is satisfied in this case. The board has the following options: Continue the hearing to a later date, or remand the matter back to the hearings officer, each of which would require the applicant to agree to extend the 100-day decision-making deadline; Close the public hearing and leave the record open; Close the public hearing and approve or deny the request. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
All right, are there questions for Joe? Please go ahead.
Do you want to go first?
Could you just go back over those three options again, Joe?
The options would?
Or four options?
Four options. The options would be to remand the matter back to the hearings officer, close the record, continue the hearing to a later date, close the record, close the hearing and leave the record, written record open, and close the public hearing and make a decision on the case are the four options. Okay, thank you.
Before we start, or you start, I do have one that, so you've made, you took pains to state that the medical hardship was there. Did you have any opinion about, there was some, in what I read, something about the need for helping on the farm and some other things that seemed to be countered from, from what the hearing? So was that, I'm asking this, was the only one you, you substantiate the medical certificates or the others?
I did find that that was, that there was the certificate, and I provided that to you.
Okay. But the other issues that weren't met, are still not met, in your opinion, or?
I'll have to wait, and it will be up to you to determine, based on the evidence provided, whether, whether you believe it's met. Testimony is evidence, as you know, so.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, it's a decision the board can make, yes.
Commissioner, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So thanks for saving time. Yeah, so Joe went through the file, and we actually found that original, which was in a different file than?
But it was also a copy of it in this file, also.
In this file, right. And I think it was provided when I looked with the letter, but it, it wasn't part of the hearings officer. They were just looking at the supplemental letter, and so the supplemental letter plus the county form means that the certification is there. So that would be the page five of the order number 11, where it says the requirements of Marion County Code 1712040A and B have not been met. That's where that one fits in.
Correct.
But the rest are the things we need to determine today. So, so Joe, thank you for the overview, and I have a series of questions before we get the testimony to kind of, what's the word, clarify what the intent is of the hearing today and what things we need to be looking for. So you provided to the board a copy of the statutes that governs the issues that we're talking about today, a copy of the administrative rules that go along with the statutes, and then a copy of the Marion County Code. And just kind of as a 101 on land use, the legislature creates the statutes. The administrative rules are created by DLCD, correct?
Correct.
And they have authority from the legislature then to expand, well, not necessarily expand, but to, they, they provide more detail within the parameters of the statute than the statute provides. And the administrative rules are really, they govern what we do. So we, until the, someone says to DLCD, that's not an okay administrative rule, we have to follow that.
Correct.
But the Marion County Code then is created by the Board of Commissioners, correct? Where it's approved by the Board of Commissioners?
Correct, yes.
And it's reviewed by DLCD prior to being established, right? So there's a process where our code goes in. So if we were wanting to actually change our code, for example, we would have to go through a process where we would notice that, and then we would make those changes, DLCD would have to approve, and we'd have to come back. It's a fairly lengthy process.
Correct.
However, we do layer some things on in our code above and beyond what the administrative rules are. So in some instances, our code follows pretty much to the letter of the administrative rules, but in other instances, there are provisions in our code that aren't discussed in statute at all and aren't discussed in the administrative rules.
That is correct.
So, but we are, in this hearing, we are bound by this code also, because this is the one that has been approved. If we wanted to change it later, that would be a whole nother issue that the board would have to talk about. However, we do have the ability to interpret what is in the code right now, if there is, so for example, in the instance of the doctor of osteopathy or whatever, a medical doctor, although that was resolved at the hearings officer level, the, the board could have said, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, that's not something that, even if prior, even if prior planning hearings had said a doctor of osteopathy doesn't count, we could say, yes, it does.
Correct. You can make that decision.
Right. Okay, so I just wanted to kind of run through these briefly, just to let you know what I have gleaned out of this review of the statute and the administrative rules. So first of all, the farm worker dwelling. So this is one that is, pretty much follows the administrative rules. So the administrative rule says that you can have an accessory farm dwelling, has to be occupied by persons who will be principally engaged in the farm use of the land, who's seasonal or year-round assistance, and the management of the farm use is or will be required by the farm operator. And that's pretty much the language that we have in our code as well. And let me see. And the other part, and I just want to make sure that this is clear to the applicants, too, that once that accessory farm dwelling isn't used by somebody that's helping with the farm, there is a requirement in the administrative rule that says that, it says, a county shall require all accessory farm dwellings approved under the subparagraph to be removed, demolished, or converted to a non-residential use when farm worker housing is no longer required. So it doesn't run with the land, once they have that conditional use. It actually runs with the condition. And so there was a piece in the, the file that showed that the applicant was like advertising the home for sale, and it has a, this apartment, and has this other thing on it. Well, those things don't exist if those people aren't living there under the situation that they're living in. Is that correct?
Correct. They're specific to the caretaker and the farm worker.
All right. And then it says that the farm workers is limited to occupancy by farm workers and their immediate families. So that one's pretty easy. The one, that the hardship provision, so that's, so the mobile home, is the mobile home that's the farm worker?
That is correct.
Right. And then the apartment is where the person that's to provide, that's being asked to provide the hardship assistance, right?
Correct. That's where the caregiver is.
Right. And so that's where the statute is very general on this. It just says that you can have a dwelling for, as a temporary use for the term of a hardship suffered by the existing resident or a relative of the resident. And then it says also, within three months of the end of the hardship, the building needs to be removed, demolished, or returned. That's in statute, and the administrative rule doesn't expand much on that statute. So, and it does say a hardship means a medical hardship or hardship for the care of an aged or infirm person or persons. And that language got picked up in our code, so that's how we define hardship as well. But then we tag on a bunch of things that are above and beyond what the statute, the administrative rule requires. So we require a doctor of medicine or a licensed psychologist to sign a particular statement. We've created a form for that. We say if evidence is presented that there is no family member able to provide the needed care, the caretaker may be someone else, provided the property is located in a particular zone. They say it's limited to the term of the hardship. And then we say those providing the care must show that they will have, will be available and have the skills to provide the primary care required by the doctor or psychologist. And then it talks about the removal. So, so those are the, the pieces that we're doing today, right? But I, I think, for me, and we're going to have this conversation later, so it's not going to help this particular case, I'd like to go through those and see whether or not those really are designed in a way that, that meet what the law requires, given that it places, in my view, our planning people in making determinations about medicine that I'm just not sure we're in the position to make. So then let me just ask, going through the, the case here, so we talked about the requirements of the certificate not being met. It looks like the next issue that needs to be proven today is whether or not the, there's a need for a non-relative caretaker. Is that correct? So that's the, the discussion that has to happen here on the record today?
That is correct.
That, that the relatives who live on the property are not available to be able to give the provided care. So that's one thing that we have to hear today. The second thing that we have to hear today is about the skills of, of those providing the care. Is that the, the second element?
Correct. If the person who's proposed to provide the care has the skills to do so.
Right. And so let me just clarify, so if the person who has the hardship, that the skills that they need are to provide transportation to appointments and perhaps?
Shop.
Right. Shopping and those types of things, it's not necessarily medical skills that have to be provided. They just would need to have a driver's license to be able to, to do that. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right. Okay. And then the, going through here, so it looked like the other standards that were in there related to the, the person that is going to be providing help on the farm. Is that correct? And whether or not that person is primarily there or not primarily there, and that?
Correct. It's whether that person is an employee of the farm as, as was originally approved. And if so, if, if you, if you make that finding and come to that conclusion, then there is no violation. And that's, that's all we need to know about that at that point.
Right.
And that followed away at that point.
And as, we, and we discussed this when we accepted the appeal, because I think there was something in here, and I'm not finding it as I'm scanning through here in front of everyone. of everyone, but that there weren't any W2s or whatever that showed that the person was an employee. But what we established in the last hearing is that there's nothing required in the statute, in the administrative rule, or in the Marion County Code that requires the person to be paid a salary as a W2 employee. So, the lessening of rent or the provision of living space could be considered remuneration for assistance on the farm. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
There's no definition of employee in there.
Right. Okay. So, I think those are all my questions. Did I leave anything out in terms of what needs to be on the record today?
I think you covered everything.
Great, okay. Mr. Chair, those are my questions.
I did have one else I thought of. Joe, and I heard you say it real quickly, there had been an annual, some type of review previously, and how did that work?
The way the hardships work, program works is, this, whenever it's established, whatever month it's established in, a couple of months before that, the following, the next year, Tammy actually sends out a nice letter along with his physician's certificate, saying he need to have this done and returned your, you're due for renewal. And there's a $25 fee that they have to pay also. And so, once that doesn't happen, then, then we contact the property owner and try to find out what's going on. If the hardship no longer exists, then we let them know that they're going to have to do something with the dwelling.
And that's something we would do for any of these situations.
We do it for all of them, correct, yes.
Good. All right. Anything else for Joe at this time? And we'll ask the applicant to come up and talk to us. I believe it's Tasha Greenwood. And if you'd go over there, Tasha, and pull the microphone real close. Start with your name and address, and then go ahead and start.
My name is Tasha Greenwood. I reside at nine three three two Saniam Loop Southeast, Almsville, Oregon, nine seven three two five.
Go ahead.
So, I'm here to establish that my need for a medical hardship, and also to explain my farm help and how he helps me on the ranch. I appreciate your time in going over this with me. The hearing's officer had stated that since I had children living in the home with me, that they should be able to provide the care that I needed. I did explain during the hearing that my son's schedule does not allow him to do so. He works a couple of jobs, and he goes to school. He's rarely home. I also stated that my daughter had a couple of jobs. The hearing's officer must have only heard that I said she worked outside of the barn, outside barns, two days a week. But she also has a job at double H, two days a week. And she also suffers from anxiety. She's not equipped to handle emergency situations. And that's why she's not my caregiver. I do have my son here. He can explain his work schedule if you'd like. My daughter, because she was too anxious, she was not able to come today, unfortunately. In past instances, when Scott was living at the home, when he would choke, her response would be to scream. She wouldn't grab a phone or anything like that. When she sees blood or bodily fluids or anything like that, she passes out. She's just not equipped to be able to handle emergency situations, and that's why I have Zach there. Zach was there and was able to assist Scott when he needed it as well, and he's just continued to live there. I do have a diagnosis of lupus. I received that diagnosis November 2016. However, I did not have copies of that in time for the hearing. My doctors did not receive copies of that until August, my primary care. My rheumatologist that I see, I'm only able to get into her probably twice a year. The average wait to see a rheumatologist is one to two years right now. So, I was not able to provide the documents from her that the hearing's officer was requiring at that time. She has put my primary care physician, Dr. Mark Shirley, in charge of my care, and he's the one that filled out the certificates. I do have medical records here that I can provide that shows that I have been diagnosed with SLE. I have the form of lupus that affects all organs in my body as well as soft tissue. And I'm, you're more than happy to, I'm more than happy to turn that over to you if you'd like, as well as information from my cardiologist. As far as my farmhand, Bill, we, he has been working for me on the ranch. I cannot, I cannot operate my ranch without him. My basic care for the horses and then I have, every week is about seventy-four and a half hours every week. That's divided up between myself, Bill, and Zach. Zach lives in the hardship permit, but he doesn't pay for his utilities, so he does install chores in exchange to cover the cost of his utilities. Bill's responsible for all my grounds maintenance. My property is approximately 5,000 feet long. Bill's house is a half a mile away from my house. He maintains the entire back half of my property, as well as keeps an eye on the rest of the property. We, unfortunately, when Bill moved there, I did not have the proper employee agreement. I had used the wrong form to fill out for a rental agreement, as I like to have both, just in case there's issues that come up with the landlord-tenant law. I wanted the protection from that as well. We have currently redone an employee agreement as well as a rental agreement, and I'm willing to turn that over to you guys as well. But Bill works a minimum of 21 hours a week for me, on average, you know, mowing, irrigating, patching, you know, holes in the trails, maintaining the riding trails for me, blackberry control, rodent control, stuff that I cannot, I cannot manage on my own. And Bill is here as well, if you'd like to hear from him. As far as the real estate, we were trying to sell our property for a time. It's no longer for sale. I plan on maintaining the home. I plan on retiring there, living there the rest of my life. I think it was a marketing thing that we probably should have thought better about by having the real estate agent posting that. If anybody did come out, obviously, we told them they had to do their due diligence. But in retrospect, it should not have been advertised that way, and I apologize for that. Do you guys have any questions for me? Anything that I should address? I'm really nervous, so my brain is like only half-working.
So, thank you for coming in. First of all, I want to thank you for your testimony and apologize for you that you needed to state personal medical information here on the record. That should not have to happen. And so, that's something that I really want us to change.
Right.
As part of our procedures. So, I, just from the written paperwork and your letter, I think you've established that you have a medical condition. I think the piece that I needed to hear from you, and I think it would be good for your son to actually come up and testify about his work schedule. That would be helpful. And I think your testimony about your daughter is sufficient here, is what types of needs do you have? And I know you've, there's some in the paperwork here, but if you could just kind of affirm that in terms of like, how many appointments do you need to go to? What times of day that would establish that your son is working while you have this need to go somewhere? That would be useful for us to have as evidence that there isn't an alternative to having someone else being on your property.
Right. I typically, I typically have to go to the doctor one to six times a month. I try to, it's hard, because it, you know, lupus flare-ups happen so randomly. Zach took me to the emergency room this last Monday at nine o'clock at night. It just depends on, you know, my situation. I try to make doctor's appointments so that they're, you know, regular, like, you know, I try to make them on Mondays or, you know, something like that. But it's so random, you know, it really is. I can't, I couldn't give you.
Well, so, why would you need someone on your property to provide you if you only have it one to six times a month? I think you need to establish the full range of things that you need.
Yeah. So, I have syncope, so I do pass out. I need somebody that can check on me, Zach, you know, make sure that I'm out and about. You know, he'll text me. Obviously, he basically doesn't see me for a while. He knows to check in on me. I also have asked him to get prescriptions for me. He's picked me up from work at times that I couldn't drive. I take certain medications that impair my abilities. Sometimes, I'll get confused. I'll forget phone numbers. I'll forget PIN numbers. I'll forget important information. My, they call it fibro fog, but it's terrifying, and then I panic. I can't remember, you know, certain times that I've taken medication or, you know, something like that. When I feel myself getting into a situation, I can let Zach know, "Hey, you know, you need to keep an eye on me. I'm not feeling right. I'm not remembering things right," or something like that. And he's right there. He's pretty much at my place 24/7.
So, you would say that you need someone there daily, not just periodically throughout the month?
Yes, daily, yes.
And throughout the day?
Correct.
And that, and that the things that they would be doing besides transportation would just be checking in on you and making sure that everything's okay?
Correct, yeah. I tend to choke a lot more lately. I get bronchitis easily because I'm not producing enough saliva.
You don't have to provide a lot of medical information for us.
Okay, sorry.
Right. I'm just trying to establish generally what the tasks are.
Right.
Okay. And then, let's see. Oh, yes. On the employee form, do you have a copy of that with you here today?
I do.
I think it would be great if you could actually show that to legal counsel, and you could review it and let us know whether or not that form establishes the relationship that we need to be able to show. And I would say, so 21 hours a week would be primarily? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's basic. That's what he, you know, that's the basic amount of work that he does.
Right.
I have not included any of the major projects that I might need done on my ranch, like painting of the shelters to protect them from rotting, you know, painting the round pen, dragging manure out of shelters, stuff like that. I just included my basic every single week hours on that employee contract.
And so, Noah, if 21 hours a week would be considered someone's primarily doing something, right? Because 40 hours a week is a standard work week. And so, if you're more than half, that would, that would take care of the legal requirement that the person be primarily on the farm, right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing about Dr. Hampton being there is, he's very knowledgeable with horses. He's had training. He's taken multiple classes and stuff like that. Even when he's not on the clock, per se, having him there, he's able to monitor the horses at the back of the property that I can't see. He's trained in knowing when a horse is lame or hurt or something like that. So, even when he's not on the clock, he's there monitoring. I also, I have pictures of my property. I don't know if you want to see it. Like I said, it's about a mile long, and he lives at the back portion. So, he can see, we have people who want to come pick mushrooms and other stuff on my property, and so, they try to sneak up through the river. And I've had actually people climb through my electric fences to come, you know, pet the horses and stuff like that. And he's there always monitoring, between him and his wife. You know, they've got their four-wheeler. They drive around the property, check things. Just having them back there is a huge piece of security for me as well.
Thank you. Just to say, I used the wrong word. So, it's, what we're trying to establish is that the person will be principally engaged in the farm use of the land. So, principally would be 21 hours. I'm looking at Joe. Does that work? Okay. Right, okay. Thank you. That was not primarily principally. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, there's three others that have signed up to speak. If you'd like to, I'll call up your names and come up and again, give your testimony. The first is, let me put on my glasses, Zach Percy, perhaps? Oh, I'm not even close. Raze?
So, I just wanted to say that I don't have any certificates or anything like medically to help her out, but I have worked at Marion Estates for a year, and I was generally the first person in the room. So, I've got basic training on the choking and just pretty much all the basic stuff that she would need. I don't have another job, so I am primarily on the property at all times. And if I'm not, I'm 10 minutes away in Stateon. Like she said, I have had to pick her up from work when she's had her flare-ups, and I did have to take her to the hospital this last Monday morning.
Okay.
Couple of questions, yeah. So, do you have a driver's license?
I do, yeah.
Do you have a driver's license?
I don't have it on me right now.
No, you don't need to show us your driver's license. Your testimony is good enough on that. And you said you worked for Marion Estates for a year. So, what was your role at Marion Estates?
I was in the kitchen. I was prepping the food, and then I was serving it to all of the residents. I was taking it into their rooms, setting them up for their meal, and then cleaning them up after.
Okay. And to work at Marion Estates, what is the minimum requirement? You know, I mean, what requirement, what qualifications did you need to get that job?
Just your basic driver's license and all that.
I just make an editorial comment. My mother is in assist-
Are you going to ask about training?
No, my mother is in assisted living, and I know that their, their pay scale is pretty much minimum wage.
Yeah.
That they do some training onsite, but they do not require medical-
Pretty basic, yeah.
-certificates to work with the elderly and so.
All right. Anything else?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Carlson, is there a backup, is there a background check required at Marion Estates?
There is, yeah, and drug screen.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Next is Wyatt Greenwood. And Wyatt, if you'd come up, I should mention Zach was at ninety-three thirty-two Saniam Loop. And if you'd give your name, address, and then your testimony, please. Wyatt?
My name is Wyatt Greenwood. I'm Tasha Greenwood's son. I do reside at nine three three two Saniam Loop, Almsville, Oregon. On the topic of my schedule, I do go to school full-time. I also have two jobs in addition to that. I work at both my grandfather's saw-servicing shop in Salem here, as well as a martial arts studio in Stateon. And I'm usually away from home from around 6:30 in the morning until sometimes as late as 10:00 p.m. So, I'm not able to be at home to provide any medical assistance or care for my mother, should she need it. Did you have any further questions for me?
Are there?
Where are you going to school?
I just finished up at Chomeckata Community College, but this fall, I'll be transferring to Oregon State University.
Congratulations. That's great.
Thank you.
Just an editorial comment.
Well, you don't need to.
You picked the right school.
Yeah, you got a couple Beaver fans up here, so.
I just want to say thank you for how hard you're working and what you're doing to get ahead in life. That's good.
Thank you.
All right, Wyatt, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next is William Hampton.
Good morning. My name is William L. Hampton, D.C. My mailing address is seventeen forty Shaft Road, number three zero eight, Stateon, Oregon, nine seven three eight three. The reason for that, I have a side business. Marion County originally, in their first statements, was implying or stating that I do not live on the property because my phone number is a Colorado area code. Most people I know today have a cell phone, and when they move, they never change their phone numbers. So, this is a point I'd really like to bring out, that I do reside on the property. We originally moved in on or about August 1st, 2015. When you look at my website, they again insisted that I do not live on the property because I teach classes. I am currently working Mondays through Fridays on the property, and I get weekends off. Mondays through Fridays on the property and I get weekends off. I have a complete list of every seminar that I've given. I have a complete list of every time I went out of the area to treat animals. Most of the time, I'll say probably 95% of the time, I will fly out on a Friday morning and return either Sunday night or Monday morning. So if you would like a list of everything that I have, basically in, since August 7th, 2015, through May 19th and 22nd, there's been approximately 30 days that I have not been here. Now I have to take off the weekend days of those. So now I'm down to about maybe 20 days that I'm gone in a, two years. To me, that tells me I live on the property. My jobs on the property, as was stated, the property is approximately a mile long. Once you get back past where my house is, then there's still another maze of roads back there. And these are all very nice gravel roads. One of my main jobs is to repair and maintain that. So I buy the gravel and put the gravel out myself to maintain these roads. Currently, I'm irrigating. Due to the extreme fire hazards, that's why we want to get everything green as we possibly can. I'm using my own equipment and unfortunately, currently my pump, right now, I can only do about 3,000 gallons a minute. So I don't have enough head pressure to get the sprinklers to work. So I have to kind of jury rig up with the aluminum piping so I can do flood irrigation. So I'm working right now six to eight hours a day playing with the irrigation, moving pipes. Um, the, again, the property being that mile long, it backs up the Thatcher airstrip, which also backs up to the Saniam River. And there's a large area back in there that is just trashed with people coming in there. There's all kinds of garbage. We hear gunshots all the time and we keep running people out of there. Um, so I do a lot back in through that area. Um, maintenance, I'm constantly with the blackberries, um, trying to keep that under control. All the trails for the horses I'm maintaining, um, I do quite a bit there. Um, so right now I'm, with the irrigation, I've been irrigating, oh, I started off, I did five days of irrigation. And then, of course, the pump, the plastic of the pumping, it broke. So it took me another day to get that squared away. I do a lot of tractor work there with all of the, uh, cutting of the brush. Uh, now it's an old tractor. So once I got started with the tractor, it started heating up. So now I had to go be the mechanic to go ahead and repair the tractor, taking it apart to figure out where the problems are. Same thing with the brush hog. It broke. I had to repair that. But I'm constantly working there. And again, like was said, I see animals. If I see things that aren't correct, I let the owners, not only of the property, but the owners of the horses know. So I'm looking out for everybody. And I do want to compliment Marion County on accepting that an osteopath is a physician. Since I'm a chiropractor, I really thought that was sad. Questions you might like to ask of me?
Yep. Oh, thank you for your testimony. And I absolutely agree with you. I was appalled when I read that we even had to go through that dialogue.
Would you like my list?
Well, I have two questions for you. So it was, uh, we had testimony earlier from Ms. Greenwood that you work at least 21 hours a week. Would you just confirm that to us?
Uh, not every single week.
On average.
It's like, today I didn't work.
No, 21 hours on an average.
On an, oh, at least, at least.
All right, that's, that's what I needed to hear. Okay. And the second was, what consideration do you get? Do you get consideration for that? So in other words-
No, that's what I really, yes.
Are you, are you made or do you get a reduction on your lease or, or?
Well, that's the thing. On the property, there is a major irrigation ditch that runs through there. That's one of the other things I'm doing right now is cleaning that in preparation for winter time. The biggest log I've taken out of there is-
No, no, so that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, do you get a salary? Do you get a reduction in rent? What do you get for consideration for all of your?
Yeah, that's, one of the things we get was a discount on our rent.
Okay.
And the use of a, I think it's 60 by 80 barn. Uh, when I was renting a little rental shed, it was costing me like $400 for 60 by, no, it was like 20 by 30 or something. And here now I have this and it has five or six stalls in it, a tack room. It has electricity running, hot and cold water. It's my shop. So there's actually fishing on the property. There's hunting on the property. There's wild blackberries. There's all kinds of things. So-
Right. So that's good.
It, it's out in the country. And our dogs, uh, one of our dogs loves the water. We have not only the river, but we have the pond and the dog gets to stay in the water.
So I think it's sufficient. We've established that you get, that you get some, uh, remuneration for that. And Noah, have you taken a look at the form and you're satisfied with that?
Yes, no problem with the form. Uh, I, I would point that the language of the ordinance is engaged as opposed to employed. So you wouldn't even strictly speaking need an employment relationship, but I think the employment agreement probably does-
Goes beyond what's required then. So we've established that. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you. You don't want my list?
I don't think we need the list, really.
All right, those are all that have signed up. Would anyone else like to say anything? That hasn't already spoke, okay. Joe, would you come back here then? Well, Joe, I could give my opinion, but I want to hear yours. So have you heard things that would satisfy the requirements?
I have, yes.
All right. You want to go through them exactly what you hear that-
I, I believe that, that based on the testimony from the applicant and her employee that he does work on the farm and is an employee of the farm. Um, if, like Commissioner Carlson made the statement, 21 hours in her mind is a, is principally engaged and that's a finding the board can make.
And the, the medical hardship part, you're satisfied there?
Um, once again, I think based on the testimony I've, I've heard that, that those findings can be made, yes.
All right, any other questions for Joe?
Was there anything else that wasn't covered that we needed to cover?
One, if you approve the request, um, I haven't talked specifically of conditions. Normally on these, we, we include the condition that it has to be renewed yearly. That, that's a normal condition. That the removal agreement that was originally filed is still in effect. So that if the hardship no longer exists, it will be removed. Um, one other issue that came up is, is the fire and life safety for the apartment. Did, did all the permits actually get, um, applied for, inspected and, and completed? Um, that's something that I'll work with the applicant and Warren, on the building official. I don't think it needs to be a separate, a separate condition. Um, but we, I can work with, with the applicant and Warren to see if, if any, if there are any outstanding issues with fire and life safety for the apartment, if you choose to approve the request.
I hear you, Joe, but I'd like to have those conditions if we're going to attach them. So how would you get, how would you attach what you just said to the record? You need some time to do that?
I will, it will be, it, it will be part of the order.
Okay, that you would include there.
If you want, if you want, I, I would recommend, strongly recommend the first two. If you want the building permit to be a condition, also we can make that a third condition without any use.
What's the third? I missed it.
Building permit was the apartment and buildings done and occupied?
Yeah, was, was it, was everything done permit, permit wise for the apartment that was created? Yes. There was some question whether that was actually final.
Speaking out loud, I prefer that be a second, separate process.
Okay.
Otherwise it makes this a lot messier.
Right. I think so too.
So you want the two conditions if you approve it and not the order?
So name, go through the two conditions again?
One, one is, is that it has to be renewed every year, right?
Okay, right, that's-
And that the removal agreement that was originally filed is still in effect.
Okay, that, those are good. But then if there, if there are issues with the buildings or whatever, let's not get it tangled up into the hardship and all of that, okay?
And so the process would be if you approve it, then I'll bring you an order back with the conditions when I get a, you know, findings prepared. Legal counsel will review those.
All right.
And in the meantime, there's no, uh, imposition of enforcement or?
That is correct.
Great, great.
Any other questions, comments?
No. I think I checked my three boxes.
Got them. I did too. Um, so for a motion that closes it and, and approves a proposal, I'll let you, would you craft this?
I think it's Commissioner Cameron's turn.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing and that we, um, approve, um, what are we approving here? We're approving the conditional use, um, CU 17 dash 012 Greenwood Clerk's File 7, 5729. That be accurate?
And I'll second the motion and also thank everyone that testified today for coming and spending time with us.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing and approve, uh, as just stated, this is conditional use. Any other discussion?
Just, just thank you for, um, coming forward and, and as Commissioner said, for your testimony today to make this right.
I heard everything I needed to. Um, I know you were guiding it, but I think it would have happened anyway. It seemed pretty cut and dried. Um, pretty happy with where we're going. So. Anything else? Call a question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Again, thank you all. And Joe, thank you as usual. All right, that is all we have this morning on a regular meeting. Others, read the places where we'll be together in the coming week. Um, I think last week there was only two. So we're getting back building here. So, uh, Thursday, the 24th, 3 o'clock, Courthouse Square Green Team, Commissioners Boardroom, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, North East Salem. Monday, 8:30, Calendar Review, Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Salem. That's followed at 9 o'clock with management update in the same location, Silverton Conference Room. And that's followed, again, Monday, the 28th, for the Board of Commissioners' Chief Administrative Officer Meeting, Executive Session if needed pursuant to warrants, 1928802ABDFHNI, also Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, the 29th, 11 to 12, Marion County Housing Authority Regular Board Meeting. And then Tuesday, the 29th, 2 to 3, Capitol Community Television Taping, CCTV Office, Studio 1, excuse me, 575 Trade Street in Salem. And right after that, a fun one, 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock, Tuesday, the 29th, Marion County Sheriff's Office Awards and Swearing In Ceremony, Sender Hearing Room, 1st floor, 555 Court Street. And then next Wednesday at 9 o'clock here in the Sender Hearing Room, our next, uh, weekly board session. So, getting busier. Chance to visit for a minute. I haven't said anything about it. I think like a lot of people, I'm still in a, um, I don't know what the right word is, but I enjoyed this weekend and the, um, eclipse quite a lot. A lot of bad things didn't happen. Um, there's been some concern we scared people away and I hope that wasn't the case, but I, I do think we tried to think of all the different possibilities. And eventually, from watching how long it took people to get home, they, they eventually did come. So, uh, really a special weekend. Something I'm not going to forget.
Well, it was great for us. We spent it with our family. Erica, my daughter, and her family were with us. But, uh, we went out to dinner Saturday night with them and we were out on Lancaster and half of the restaurant was empty that we went to. We got a whole half of a restaurant to ourselves. And we were there kind of during the dinner hour, like 6:30, something like that. So, uh, and reading in the paper, there were a number of restaurants that said that business was really slow until Sunday. I was reading word of mouth. I think I had three hour wait on Sunday, but, but the, I think what, you know, this is all anecdotal, but my sense is that the people that lived here all-
Stayed home.
Stocked up like we told them to, stayed home. And so the only people that were out were the people that were trickling in from outside to see the eclipse. The other funny thing was that I went to visit my mother, uh, on, uh, Monday and went across the West Salem Bridge and at 5:15, which, uh, on a 5, which on a 5:15, it's going to be backed up to, on Marion Street. It was smooth sailing all the way across. There was hardly a soul on Wallace Road. I actually took a picture of it because I couldn't believe it. So very few people went to work on Monday. I have a feeling, uh, or at least the people that generally get off at 5 o'clock that, uh, clog up Marion Street and the Marion Street Bridge. So I think things went, I think our planning actually helped streamline that, but I'm thinking that there might have been some adverse effects on, on businesses that, that perhaps we weren't anticipating. But as our, our emergency management people who did an amazing job.
They spent long hours.
Right, they spent awfully long hours. Said you can never over prepare for anything. The fact that we had, a- all the reports I saw were less business at the hospital than usual, less problems with fires, less problems with everything. So to have that many people in this area and to have that happen, I think is really a testament to, to their hard work.
In the view from Detroit?
Yeah, Far East County.
Far East County, excuse me.
Far East County. Uh, so, uh, it was great, it was a great experience to actually see the boots on the ground. Friday morning, I got to go to the Sheriff's Mobile Command. Uh, it was in the Detroit, um, forestry station there. They had it all set up with the, by the helipad and the medical. And in fact, you came up Friday afternoon. So that was 8 o'clock in the morning and, um, then I did a ride along with, uh, Deputy Farn from French Creek Road there, right on the Brighton Bush Bridge, all the way over to Opal Creek. Came up over the top into the Little North Fork. I'd never been on that road before. And we were just like overwhelmed with how little people were up there. We were expecting to see it just packed with campers and, and dispersed campsites. And he, he just said, hey, this is lighter than a normal, um, weekend up here. So all the way over into Shady Cove. Um, and to, to see the cooperation between the state police, the sheriff, uh, the locals up there, the Forest Service, it was just really, all the planning that went in that we've been hearing about was, was great. Um, and then, uh, that afternoon you came up and we did a tour of the, um, the medical facilities and the fire operations. And the good news is, is the winds over the weekend, the humidity up in Far East County, uh, came way up and the temperatures came down, which created a lot of smoke, um, but kept the fires at bay. Uh, so in fact, I got videos, um, it was amazing on, on Monday morning, being out on the boat with my grandson, who's two years old, and, and Amanda, um, how cold it got right when the sun went away. I mean, I had to wrap him up and wrap my, myself up in some towels. But, um, the, the, um, the population up in, in the canyon was, um, lighter than a normal weekend. Uh, I think Saturday or Sunday, maybe, maybe it got big, but never traffic problems. I think they had one accident. In fact, if you look at Deputy Zahn's Facebook page, it was pretty interesting. He said three things that he learned this weekend. Make sure you have water under your makeshift swing rope. Cause I think somebody was on a swing rope and missed the water.
I could do that.
Uh, orange juice can make you drunk, was another one, I think in the morning. He had posted. So somebody must've got popped for drinking in the morning.
Doesn't sound happy.
And, uh, I can't remember what the third one was, but, um, got to say hello to the Klamath, um, boat, the guys who came from Klamath Falls. Marine Board, uh, was on that and thanked them for coming up to help. But I think it was a really, um, non-event event, which is good, which is what we wanted. And I think there's some criticism out there about, you know, whatever, always going to face some of that. But I'm really, uh, proud of how our people and others really worked hard this weekend, put in a lot of hours, up to it, and even over the weekend.
Well, you know, I think that maybe the fear was as much about the weather as anything else. Because I, from what I could see in the coast, it fogged in, right?
Uh, it cleared for them and like I said.
Did it clear in?
Yeah, they, it was pretty special.
Okay, it was okay. All right, good. And, and-
But you don't know that till right then.
Right, exactly.
You can't go anywhere.
And it was, and they were not sure even in Salem whether or not the partly cloudy meant that it would burn off, you know, like it sometimes does even by noon. And so- meant that it would burn off, you know, like it sometimes does even by noon. And so, I did see that there was some gridlock on the roads up in the Prineville area.
Madras.
Fairly, yeah, fairly early on. They had a huge number of people in Madras, and in Madras, you were pretty much guaranteed sunshine there, you know? So, that could have been a deciding point for a lot of people that were trying to make sure that they didn't miss it because of clouds. And then I did read, you know, you kept saying that this 1979 eclipse that you saw, and I was in Boston, well, I was in Boston at the time.
You were trying to tell me it was a solar or-
Right, no, it was the same thing. You were right, you were right.
Thank you.
But, but the thing was that it was, that there was cloud cover.
Right!
And so, nobody saw anything, and-
I feel shorted. I've said that out loud.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I went outside then in '79, and yeah, it was dark. You see a few birds, but it-
Wasn't like this.
If I'd have known what was going on up-
And it was in February. Wasn't it in February, it was in the winter?
Yeah, February 26th, or something like that, yeah.
If I'd have known what was going on right above me, it, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why I really underplayed this, and maybe why I was so surprised when it kind of went, wow.
Yeah, yeah. And the glasses worked, I was able to see the little thing. And then the shadows on the back of our house, and you could put your fingers like this, or like put circles, and actually it created the eclipse circle behind it. So, like the shadows actually had round spots of where the sun was. So, that was like what kindergarten teachers do with their kids. It was really pretty cool. There were so many phenomena that happened there that you just didn't anticipate. And then the whole 360 sunset that you got.
I didn't, my son Andy made a point of looking around. He said that was cool. I didn't, I didn't even know that was going on. I was stunned by my, my first view.
Yeah.
I want to take the, the emergency management part, and it was talked about several times, how, what a good drill it was. And I'm fully confident that way. We couldn't have had more things to work on, think about. So, gosh, I hope there's nothing, but I think we're as prepared as we're going to be.
We had so much food in the refrigerator, we could not even put leftovers in.
You couldn't call.
It was terrible. We, we were so prepared. And then, the, it was funny, because I was anticipating, you know, I had the landline, and anticipating that the internet could go down, cell phone service could go down, like they were talking about. But I was posting pictures during, I mean, like right after the totality and during like the, the 45 minutes when it was going through. So, and my Facebook was working just fine, so.
Andy had some friends over with us and that, his wife's friend, I guess, but they live in Portland. And so, it was over and they said, well, we're going to head out. And I said, why? Why don't you just stay here? We're just boop around all, oh, no, they wanted to get home. And it was like five and a half hours-
Yeah.
-from sublimity. And I thought, you know, wouldn't you rather just sit in a lawn chair for a while?
Exactly. When we drove over to go to dinner that evening, I mean, it was like wall-to-wall traffic. No, I guess we took a drive. That's what happened. We took a drive. That was before dinner. And they said it was, what, three hours to Portland, four hours, something like that. People were just parked on the freeway. Going south, it was fine, but going north, it was horrible.
They said it was getting, building up in Albany, too. There's one other comment that, and it probably doesn't come up again, but I, I heard like a lady on the news, maybe the weathercaster saying, well, she wished, it was 99%. She thought that'd be good enough. And I want to tell people, if you're at 99, go all the way. Come on, it's not good enough.
So, so my daughter and her husband from Beaverton drove up Saturday, and they said it was the easiest drive they've ever made from Beaverton to Far East County. They were just so impressed that, I mean, there was no traffic.
But actually, when I came up Detroit, I left a half hour early, expecting troubles. And then, just like you say, it was easier.
That was on, that was on Friday afternoon.
On Friday.
Right, so Thursday, I drove, because I, I came down, I was up there Wednesday, came down for work, and then Thursday after work, I went back up Thursday afternoon. And it was like a Friday. It was pretty heavy, a lot of, you know, campers and that type of stuff. But Friday, I think, was pretty light. It was just-
All right, well, we ought to do it again, that's all I can say.
I want a redo. It was a do-over.
It was a great, great event.
It was spectacular.
Yeah.
It was just awesome.
I think people will remember it for a long time.
Yes, perfect event.
Then let's call this meeting adjourned.